Okay, it was called to order and we'll call all five members of the council present. Representatives are. It wasn't going to be you this time. Representatives Martinus, it was there to be in the council member. For easy Schultz. McPherson Dominguez and Martinez are all present for the meeting. So first up is approval of the agenda. All in, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
There's this motion and a second, is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. So next step is approval of the consent agenda. This will be the city council minutes, the January sewer report and the February sewer report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The consent agenda is approved. We welcome the West Liberty Volunteer Fire and EMS services for annual report. And this has been in your packet and by Chief Sickles who is here with us today. Along with several other members of the fire department. And let us say very loud and clear that we appreciate all of your work.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Sickles.
All right. So I guess we'll just start off by saying we have a banner here once again. As you can see. Through here, the officers from the 2023 that got listed and then the incoming officers, which basically wasn't a whole lot of change. Pretty much the same. The start off with kind of the ambulance report. Basically. We had a little over six hundred and six hundred and what was it, thirty-one? I think it was the ambulance runs this year. We had the ambulance out. Both ambulance at one time. Several times, like eighteen times over the year, so. We talked about our EMTs and paramedics that we have on currently, we're covering at a rate about two hundred hours. We have different folks on, we kind of just recently hired a couple of new ones to participate and it's just kind of, we're not vulnerable to two hundred hours, it's a flexibility type thing. Most of those guys have full-time jobs and to try to plug people in and make things work. We just need that little bit of flexibility, so we got a couple on. On, we have ten EMTs on our department. Four of those EMTs live outside the city limits. So it makes it really tough to, you know, attend calls, it's a lot of pressure on those six that are in town. Yeah, so. The city of West RB actually proposed that a hundred thousand dollars of the oh, COVID monies would be set aside for an ambulance and we would like to start moving ahead with that and at least get a chassis purchase. So that we can get on the books because we're looking at at least twenty-four months delivery before the rest of the ambulance is put together, the backlog, that's all. So one thing that we did improve on with our ambulance this year was there's GMT monies and as a government program. When we first started that program, we got three hundred and ten dollars per ambulance call. This is, which is not much. This year we did some rework and worked with the folks with GMT. Our new calls are going to be nine hundred and sixty-three dollars per call. So they raised it up six hundred plus dollars per call. Now that's just Medicare calls, but we roughly took about twenty-five thousand in on those calls this past year. We totaled about two hundred and fifty-three thousand and change for the ambulance for the year twenty twenty-three. So and one thing I would like to add to that is that they made EMS any central service to stay alive. We've been deep in trying to get that pushed through. Looks like we're going to push to have a November vote. And right now, the what we're looking at is we could charge up to seventy-five cents per thousand. And that's what Cedar County is charged, we are looking at somewhere around sixty cents. That's what we're thinking. First, I will have to come to a vote, we did talk with the rural folks. That was with their meeting a couple of weeks ago and did tell them that too. Don't have all particulars to that, but basically that would give us no money to help hire staff and and maintain our analysis and such as well. So.
Is that what they proposed is sixty cents or sixty?
That's what, yeah, Kara, that's what we're thinking we're doing. It's, it's not being done countywide.
Oh.
Because musketeen would lose money, the fire department, so they don't want to do that. So it's being proposed to be done by service areas.
Oh, okay.
So.
And they can do that, okay.
Yep, sure, yeah. So we're looking at, since we have first responders and attendants in Nicholas too. Proportioning some of those monies to help support what their needs might be as well. In that sixty cents. Any questions about that as far as that and the ambulance?
I think a couple of things started to strike me in your report, one is it looked like there were slightly more cases or calls outside of town than in town.
There is, that just varies from, from year to year.
Yeah.
And most of that, quite honestly, is depending on how, how many times we get called out to the interstate.
Oh, okay.
So those numbers really is what I think affects most of that, otherwise it's, it's a pretty even square. So.
And the, the second thing that I was pleased with is that it looked like you had an increase of from five to six people responding to calls.
That was on fire, yeah, that was on fire, yeah, yeah. So as you know, volunteers are, are tough to, to get and they're tough to maintain too. We've had a few that got on the department and was on a bad call and yeah, that was all she wrote.
So that's, last thing I just comment back is that very much appreciated. We went through some days of very bad weather where you were out on calls with, and very much appreciated.
Yeah, we're a couple of places digging out of snowbank so we can get into people, so. But as you look at the fire vehicles, I always put that down in the, in the miles and such, hours and such, I'd like to share with the council tonight. Our ladder truck, I'm in contact with Lee and the rule himself. There was a cylinder that extends our ladder, goes up, it's quite a large cylinder, and then there's all the electric stuff that goes in through that boom. And we were taking it out to do some routine training in that cylinder. Hot. So there's no place around, Alexis, which does not work on them anymore. We tried another place.
I tried Aljorkers in West Branch.
Because they have.
They, there were those. All the combines and everything they got in for winter time, they couldn't get to it for months.
So we found a place in, up by Minneapolis, Brian Flake did, and we took it up there to be looked at. So I did finally get a bid, Lee, they came, right before I came over. See, I have it on my phone, but I'll share that with you now, but. He estimated it was going to be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand to repair. So, but that would then give us a five-year like warranty on it. Pumps, everything, so he's going to go through it pretty extensively. The guy said it was a, a great truck, he said he was surprised that that somebody who had it before really took care of it, so. So we need that and.
Chief, and I would just add, maybe Dog can say, even with that repair, our fire department is still well under, well into an ownership on that piece of equipment for what they originally purchased it for and the years of service that you've had and now just with this repair, if you look at that overall cost. Again, it's still well vested into that, you guys can add to that.
Yeah, we bought that truck for eight and one hundred dollars and I, I don't remember how many years ago it was now, but
Five years ago.
I was on an auction and I bid on it and I was really surprised that we got it that cheap and I mean, it, low mileage, it was from the city of Rock Island, which it was really taken care of.
If we were to buy that truck today, it would cost somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and a million dollars. So, yeah.
So I just want to counsel to keep that in mind as we're working through their expense requests, that the value of the equipment versus what, yeah. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
In your, oh, okay.
No, no.
I, I was, there is, under your five-year plan, you want to replace a couple of trucks, make a super dump?
We had talked about that before with folks. We have kind of an idea, as we've been talking around to trade in some of the, two of the older trucks. That they're, they're past twenty-five years. You know, and basically your trucks after a certain age, they won't, you know, guarantee you anything on, so we take really good care of those trucks, so they're, they're really good for us, you know, but what we thought we could do is try to reach out and get some grants and such. And use those two trucks to either sell outright or trade in on the truck and make a super pumper that we call it. So it would have three thousand gallons of water, so that would help us with our rural runs, because you don't have any. If we went to Nichols, for example, there's no fire plugs down there, so we'd have to use, set a tank and, and carry water from the closest, we, we make trips back and forth to their station or clear into West Liberty to get water. So it would give us three thousand gallons that would help, plus we, it'd be a Class A pumper, which would extend all our insurance stuff out at least another twenty-five years. So, and then we'd make it, why we call it a super pumper is because we would have rescue equipment and such on it as well. So.
Oh, okay.
Anything else yet?
The insurance ratings.
Yeah.
For homeowners would, would be better too.
So as we look down as, you know, the fire call breakdowns, we had a hundred and twenty-nine calls with the fire department. We had a total of six hundred and ninety-six men that responded, women. Averaged six per call, which was up from last year by one. Structure fires went up eleven, believe it or not, we had a lot of structure fires this past year. The, I don't know. I, I couldn't really lay out a reason why, but seemed like we were, either we had the fire or Adalissa or Nick was out of fire and we're supporting them, so eleven from last year. Uh, and as you look down through city calls, thirty-six, rural calls, thirty-eight. Three of those in the city, we mutually aid with the area departments. And vice versa, our rural, there's four of those. Car accidents, basically, most of them are right here in town, there's twenty. And then we had miscellaneous rubbish grass fires and such. Which we use our grass buggies and such to, to do that. As we talked about the five-year plan. We've got a brush buggy set up now, it's got a front mount on it that we can sit inside the vehicle and squirt the, the fire. Instead of standing back and sucking the smoke and all that kind of stuff. So we haven't got to use it a whole lot, but it seems to work pretty good, so we might look at trying to get the other truck mounted or something like that.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it, it is, but the, when you have like that monster fire we had. Chief, is that two years ago now? Standing corn beans, you know, a thousand acres on fire and you couldn't see. I mean, it registered from the satellite. So, and we were out there three days. But if we had something like that, I don't think Dog would have went down choking from the smoke, so. But, so then I guess I, I'd like to, our tanker truck that we have, we had some leaking with it on top and we spoke to Ken Wright. And Ken Wright took the top off of that, repaired the truck. And didn't charge us anything, so I'd like to say thank you to Ken for doing that, so. It's some minor repairs to some of the trucks' valves and different things that we were able to take care of ourselves. So really nothing, I mean, besides our, our ladder truck, everything has been very minor, it's as far as it bears. Equipment for the following year, I mean, I'd like to buy a couple bunker gear sets so we can have some stuff ahead it, you know, I mean, right now we've got some folks that might be in our black coats but are yellow pants, you know, but it'd be nice to start getting a few sets of bunker gear ahead so that when we had somebody else new on that could jump into some, some gear. We don't get a whole lot because you don't know if people, different sizes, you know, what will fit, but we have a couple sets there that people can put on at least right away, that would be good, so. And then we have a need for our pocket pages, so that we're not carrying the radios all the time. So we'll do that a little bit at a time. One thing that would be nice to have too is some portable jaws that we could stick on the other Class A pumper. Now, we have some right now that we got a couple of years ago that are battery powered. And they're, you don't have to have the cables and hydraulic hoses and such on top of all that stuff. Then you only have so many feet of hose that you can, now with the battery, you can go out hundred and fifty yards in the field and not have to worry about it, so. It'd be nice to replace those hoses with you know, the batteries. So how, how?
Well, they're twenty-five, probably plus years old.
I would guess, so. Um, as you can see, down at the bottom, we've got a list of all of our members. This year at our Christmas annual, we did share some awards with folks. Lee and Sherry was with us, yeah, at dinner and we celebrated everybody's service, so I just point out the, look, we got some guys there with thirty years. Twenty years, twenty-five, twenty. And Dog, you've got what, forty?
I'm only forty-one.
Forty-one. So.
I know, I'm only forty-five.
So a lot of a lot of dedication there. I guess, lastly, I kind of threw it at the bottom of the report, you know, they talk about the hours and such that we spend at the, there we go, at the department. We kind of did an average on some of the folks that were more active with us. And we get right around the end here, like I think it was, I'm going to stick that. Seven hundred hours, when you're looking at the training and you're looking at the time on fires and going on the calls and the rescue calls and such. It's about seven hundred hours of time during the year that these folks dedicate to the community and the surrounding areas. So lot of lot of time and effort and dedication. I said this last year too, we got the life packs and thank you for, for approving that, our life packs. Were a fifteen-year program, but now they're thirty. So I'm, I'm sure I won't see the end of these babies, but it was very nice having them and they are guaranteed stem to stern. If something would happen, if I dropped it, broke a tank or stepped on a hose and it broke it. It's, it's taken care of, so. Uh, I think that's about it, if anybody has any questions over anything on this or of us, the department. I got quite a crowd behind me here. Anybody want to say anything else?
Uh, one thing I wanted to add about the super bumper number is not only, like Chief said, it'll be a very easy way to get a lot of water where we need. It will also be in automatic and on a manual, and two of our numbers are still manual and not a lot of people can account and drive those.
Yeah, and they're.
It'll be a convenience for pretty much anywhere on the department to drive them.
And it's that little transmission on it too, so you gotta know how to flip the switch on the year shift and everything too, so. Little tough drive, only certain people can drive it, but it's things, so. We, I guess, best to chief to join us next meeting, so we can talk to him and his officers and ask them to come to dinner with us. That day, Eric, if you'd like to come and be part of it, you're sure welcome. It is EMS training that night, so we probably will have a little bit of training as well. Yeah, might be able to sit in and see a little flavor of what we go through, yeah, so.
Imagine as a patient.
Maybe he'll volunteer for you.
I know you have some people at least. So, any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody for your, your service, these hours, and that's amazing. And, and we appreciate all that you do and, and Chief, I will get with council, if we've got that information, we'll get it moving.
Yeah, and you send, you know, a lot of sitting down with the budget sometimes, so.
I owe you that too.
Yeah, probably whenever you can.
Yeah.
Free up some time.
The two of us, and we can get the two of us and.
We can get Mindy and Eric and Dog together.
Yeah, expect that probably within another week or so, we'll change it up schedules.
Okay. Sounds good.
We can address your five-year and pressure you that.
We'll look the other way if you don't want to stay for the other things that are doing.
Well, we just went, unfortunately, to visitation.
Yeah.
We got all this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Start to serve the community, but keep that, but thank you guys. Okay, moving on. Reports from the employees, city manager, city attorney, board, city board reports committees and committees. First up is our engineer Leo Foley.
Okay, so a quick update on the wastewater treatment plant, as you well know, we have, we're in the process of design and the baseline improvements. During the preliminary design, which is geotech survey. And really looking at how is the project flow, what, what can we do? The last part of that was to coordinate with West Liberty Foods on how do we make the funding work out and all of that. So we're in that process, we talked to Lee this week. And realized we probably now need to look at one more step, but maybe before we had baseline improvements and then a bigger improvement that may or may not come if, if for instance, somebody else moved into town or something else happened and you needed more capacity. At this point, you don't, we just wanted to take care of some of the equipment and kind of take care of some of the bottlenecks. Now we need to look at is what are prioritizing that kind of. They're doing that, we're doing that as we speak. The next, the next project is the wastewater, the water treatment plant. Well, number two, the well itself is rehab. The hatch is finally in and finally installed. The roof over where the hatch is, is about eighty percent done now. That's all good, they said they're going to come back, maybe in a month and finish the rest of the roof, they're, they're still working on that in part. Well, everything's looking good finally there, the big hangup of course was the some of the controls equipment, but it's going to take a little while longer, they, they were hoping it would be here by April first. So if that's here, it's not a big install once they get that, but they haven't got that equipped. And then, so that takes care of that one. Rainbow drive is again in pretty good shape, we can have one light that we need to move a base on. And then they need to do the sidewalk and seating, the sidewalk along Columbus. Some things still to do there. Naughty circle essentially done, there's a punch list with two or three like cracks in the concrete. Few other little things that we've worked together with All American, I think we have resolution now. Adam was very helpful in saying, here's why we need this and this and this, so I think we've moved pretty well in that direction. And then as far as new work coming, again, we've been talking with Lee about kind of taking another look at our water and sewer rates, we've done it maybe five or six years ago. And then how do those rates fit into the CIP for the food? Well, that'll probably be at the next meeting we'll have. With that, any questions?
How about the, we're, we're waiting on control equipment for the well number two, right? But what about, does that include the motor? I thought we were having issues.
The motor, we have the motor and that's installed and it's, the motor and the pump are together and they go down in the well.
Okay.
But that's installed, all of the equipment on top of the well, if you go in there, it looks like a brand new well. So the only thing is the motor control center is part of the controls and that'll be on the wall.
That's we're waiting, okay, okay.
All right.
Okay, so we have other reports in the packet. Other folks here, so any questions for, on other reports?
Yeah. I noticed we're good on with our, is it the sewer? We had that report early on for the sewer report, January and February, we had, yeah, we were good. So as far as West Liberty Foods goes and they're that's going to be, is that, is that going to be a problem in the future?
Treatment plant, so.
Okay.
Well, we're in ongoing conversations with them.
Yeah.
They brought in some other people to try and figure out what's going on in the situation. They've had like seven or eight violations in months once in a while. And I've heard they brought in some specialists and they're doing some different things about trying to alleviate problems, so. We're working on it, let's put it that way, so.
Is that to EPA or DNR, DNR violation?
EPA is looking at them too, Derek.
Oh, okay. So just to let you know, so Leo, Craig and myself, I have all been speaking with them, mostly Craig, but Leo, we put Leo in to, to assist with some questions. And that was with our first meeting with the DNR situations and questions like that, and then now they've had some more and they continue to work with them into the best of our ability, but it'll be up to them to make those changes within their structure, within their infrastructure that they're looking at, so. Craig did some research and made a recommendation to them on one of the issues, but I think that's, we're now. Um Craig did some research and made a recommendation to them on one of the um issues, but I think that's where now they've got.
That one, because they have. Basically, I talked about lift station coming in when we did a meeting for them. And what happened was they've got about three different. Spaces coming into that same lift station, so you could not meet her. Coming back to basically running sanitary all the way to.
So I mean, we've been trying to work diligently with them to give them options and also making affordable options for, you know. Um but, you know, just like Frank said, now it's 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 moved up the chain, so and we'll just. Ready and prepared um to meet with them. We had to reschedule a meeting. Um we went back to meeting formally with West Liberty Foods. Um. And we rescheduled because I was not able to make last Friday, so we've got to reschedule for this Friday.
Any other reports or questions for folks that are here and regarding the uh reports that have been submitted? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports, and I don't believe that there's been any committees, so. Um that brings us to beer and liquor licenses, um Highway Six Spirits LLC. Um. So that's Detective uh Three Sixteen of Twenty Four, um and I believe that that's a consent vote. So is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve? Is there a second? It's been moved in second and it's their discussion.
There's no, been no issues with. Alcohol, it of.
All right, no hearing no further discussion, uh if you're in favor of granting the liquor license, signify by saying aye. And if you're opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, it's approved. Next up are the uh vendor uh voucher claims. Uh we have number one prepaid in the amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, we've moved to pay all those bills. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Uh last uh council meeting, we tabled um the voucher to uh Cardinal Signs. Um due to the fact that we have three council members here and one of them uh is uh owner of uh. Uh Cardinal Signs and abstained, so is there a motion to approve this in the amount of of a hundred and twenty dollars? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. And yes, and counsel of the mayor for Tim uh abstains. Um so uh those opposed signify by saying no. And it's approved. Now we have the library vendor voucher prepaid claim list in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. And thirty cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh those opposed signify by saying no. The motion carries. We now move to public comment and or correspondence. Uh so first of all, there are, uh we'll open it up for public comments. Seeing no public comments, we'll go on to uh city council member comments and correspondence, and we'll start with um. Council member, Horizic. Then we'll move to council member Schultz. Then we'll move to Mayor Procham McFerrin.
I don't have much. I do have a response from, or a comment from. Um Ms. Brooks here in town, resident here in town, that wants to thank the road crew for sweeping Division Street, so there's no more much. They've been out recently, so.
Council member Dominguez.
Yeah, um. I I've just noticed online a lot of people. Hearing the West Liberty Foods announcement recently of two hundred and sixty workers that they're laying off of the client. Um so I just wanted to acknowledge that I'll be seeing if I can. Get some time with Mr. Ak and just understand more. Um what they're doing for the workers. It looked like they were going to be providing some support to try to find other positions within the. Company for them and provide like resume building and career development opportunities, which I appreciate. But I know it's gonna be absolutely devastating to a lot of families here in West Liberty, so.
Uh we met. And talked about this before, it was uh made public and um I've been in contact with workforce development. Um and to to make sure that they're in, I have not heard back from the Community Action Agency. I asked for. Uh their participation um as we go through this, you'll note uh as we go through the agenda, things that. We as a city uh want to do, and tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I have a meeting on uh increasing mental health services. Um in the area too, as we go through this, we want to be as supportive with uh families as much as possible and helping the. Uh re. Find other employment or uh work through the issues with employment. The last one is to lose uh prior part of our population.
I'm just thinking of stuff with economics and the.
Yes, and I, yes, I've also talked with two of the county board to certify it.
Both my parents have worked there, a lot of our family members have worked there, so.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's eventually gonna have to happen sometime, but it's nothing really prepares you for it.
Right.
So I appreciate the extra work that you're doing to understand that and provide resources.
Yes, we hope that we can. Do as much. Was that all that you had? Okay, council member Martinez. All right, uh city manager.
Uh just exactly what you said, Mary, we did meet online with the CEO and we went over some. Steps and we had some discussions, the um the other thing was is to reach out to the Minister of Association. Um there's some managing uh pretty um decent balance from the contribution that was provided to them. So I think again is um what we committed to do is work with the HR team. Um and pass along as much, as many resources and and things that we can, any of the city. Um and just as the rest like giving like uh supervisors and body and. Outside of that, I haven't had um.
I forgot that also, I've talked with the library too about the resources they have for folks on uh developing resumes and. Uh looking for other employment.
Yeah.
Too, so yeah, yeah.
I saw that comment, I appreciated that, Ali.
All right, that's all that you have, city manager. Okay, city clerk. All right. Okay, new business. Um appropriate discussion and appropriate action uh on the committee appointments, and I think. That um uh council member Mark uh Dominguez had requested a change, and so that might be part of our discussion here.
So. So and and please, please jump in. Are we at that point where we're talking about this? Oh, we're on committees. Yeah, I thought we were on the week here, not many. That's why I'm confused. Yeah, 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 I was just.
Yeah, on the committee.
Um.
You were on the ambulance.
Yes, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Yeah, so I um I'm happy to switch committees with um council member Schultz. Um if it's okay with you, Mayor, be and Tim be on the ambulance for then I can be on the buildings, ground streets and alleys.
Yes, if you're free going, I'm.
Thank you so much.
Are there other changes, questions, discussion about um this this subject? Okay, so then uh we, I would entertain a motion to approve the um committee assignments.
Motion to approve committee assignments.
Um is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee assignment uh listing, signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the hotel feasibility study. Um and we'll have discussion, motion and consent vote on this, so. Um I know that this is something that um our economic development uh director Ken Brooks is working on. Ken, are there any things you'd like to say regarding this?
Had the pleasure of working with city manager Gertz throughout this process, um speaking with representatives from the hotel industry. And we brought the full council a couple of months ago, the study is necessary. No matter which representative in the hotel industry, which you're working with, every company is wanting to acquire. The feasibility study we want to complete. Um so city manager and I identified a couple of different proposals um. For this actual study, but the one that was recommended by representatives.
City manager, Gertz, anything to add to?
No, uh we director. Uh she works covering that very long.
Are there other questions or further discussion by members of the council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the feasibility study.
Motion to approve feasibility study?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Or no, we've done the discussion. Uh all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, it's approved.
Thank you.
The next follows what we were discussing about uh the folks that are affected by the layoff. Uh at uh West Liberty Foods and what we're proposing here is that we do two um additional extensions. Uh for the employees that are affected, um so that uh we help them maintain utilities. Help them um work through this difficult time in their life. Um so let me open that up for the session.
And that's with the remaining funds, is that?
So let me clarify, um and um I may ask um for people to assist me with this. So um on an annual basis, utility customers are offered a one-time uh opportunity. Within a, within a twelve-month period that they can um ask for an extension. So if they're unable to make their utility payment on time, they can request an extension and the city will provide them an extension. Of an amount of time to pay their bill without receiving a disconnection um. Uh and so what we're proposing is that specifically for West Liberty Foods employees that are. Going to be impacted by loss of job, that we provide them um two on top of the one, so. Three within a calendar year um from the date of their dismissal or their termination. Um we would work with the um, I would work with the HR department, so we can have documentation to support. Of course, and to verify that um. Without trying to sound, um you know, some may think that three is an excessive amount, but. Again, you don't know what's going to occur within a year of that person's uh loss of their job, so. Um and then we would always continue to remind them that we can work under a contract. Um what we were saying uh plus now in the hearing was that. The other part of this is just making sure that we can provide resources, so if they're unable to make the payment altogether. That, you know, we can direct them to either the Ministry of Association, Community Action, um other opportunities for them to get assistance with funding as well. Uh but we can also do a a contract um with the uh utility customers.
I wonder if. Like we have the capacity to put together a flyer or something with all those resources on in one place. In Spanish and English, and maybe even we can get some other language, because I know there's several languages. On and maybe work with HR to see what languages might be appropriate.
Yep.
If not, I know that's that's a lot.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, our conversation was just you and we were trying to collect.
Yeah.
And I think that's a very good point. I mean, we we did plan based on council's action, at least. Communicating that, but we wanted to go through HR with West Liberty Foods first, just to. You know, have them make that internal announcement, work with their staffing, and then once they're okay with it, then we can. Do something more challenging.
Because they don't start to look before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's over a period, I know it's just a period.
Yeah, but that's a very good.
Yep.
All right, there's your further discussion.
And I'm just to clarify, this would be over the course of this whole year. Until the end of the year, wouldn't it be the first three or four months after their layoff?
So it would be, so again, based on whatever um. My idea would be to work with the HR department and then they're gonna provide a letter for that individual saying what their termination leave was. So then essentially then effective based on that date, um they have. Uh from the first time they use an extension, that date, a twelve-month period to use. Those extensions. So it's not like in the calendar year, it's within twelve months. I believe that's how our extensions are.
So our extension is per calendar, however, what she's proposing, we can do it, we just have to tell her system that we are. So it is something we can do in a wider range, if that is the direction that makes you to go as possible.
Because I'm thinking it's just trying to follow along their unemployment, when trying to follow along versus. You know, looking at it from the the calendar, say start here, start there. My recommendation is to follow along with their loss of position. Along with the first time they use one, and then most likely if you use one. Then depending on whether you get a job or not, or depending on how things are going, there's a possibility. It's not saying that I automatically want them to use them. I just want to make sure that we're providing enough, just as you're asking, enough time. To allow them to get on their feet. And I don't know, maybe two, maybe an additional two is too many, maybe it should, I I don't know what the right answer is, but. Something's better than.
No, so with the extension, let's say that they meet the extension and definitely in themselves, it would be the time to them about putting that into a contract to break it down.
I sense that this is the council and uh city employees are very interested in making this as nameless as possible. For the folks that are affected by this, so this may be not the last time that we address this issue. Is there further discussion? Is there? Please extension. Is there a second? Been moved in second and all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the resolution uh or the action is approved. And next is the resolution uh to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three uh fiscal audit. And to allow Bowman and Miller to file the audit. Um so first off, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four zero two zero. Two zero hyphen one three zero.
Motion.
Motion to approve and motion for second. Motion to approve, then motion at the second, uh now we move to discussion, is there any discussion regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, this is the audit that was presented.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. McFerrin, yes.
The next resolution, uh, twenty twenty-four zero two two zero hyphen one three one approving. Uh, organization resolution with West Liberty State Bank itself, Atomless Savings Bank, and Midwest Bank. Um, so is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve resolution.
There's, and there's a second, now we move to discussion. City manager, anything to add?
This is just uh your authorization to say who has the authority to sign. And manage financial um. Piduchary rights under uh the city um with these institutions that are there this way.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. McFerrin, yes. Freezer.
Yes. Next step is resolution twenty twenty-four uh zero two two zero hyphen one three two. This is the resolution on the position and salary wages of the ambulance department. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve, is there a second? It's been moved in seconded, we move on to discussion, is there discussion? Information's part of the package.
Mr. Mayor, I received correspondence from the um fire chief and the ambulance coordinator. Um, they have looked to bring on two additional uh paramedics. Um, again, as they continue to work under the two hundred hours of our current fiscal year's budget. Um, they did have one paramedic that is out um due to an injury. Um, that was not under the city of West Liberty, it was under another um, another. Place where the individual worked, um, so that's taken him out, so they were bringing on another two to help plus the hours. But that one individual had been being up, but again, if we did clarify that. We say, we stay within our current years, editing the others and, um, so that's been discussed.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. McFerrin, yes. Schultz.
Yes.
Freezer.
Yes. Okay, next step is resolution uh twenty twenty-four zero two two zero hyphen one three three. Uh, this is the resolution um similar to what um. Uh, resulted in a trip to Washington DC by by the city manager, uh mayor, um Anderson, um. Council member Dominguez. And uh, uh, economic development, uh Ken Brooks, uh director Ken Brooks. Um, that dealt with Army Reserve, this is extending it to uh National Guard. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second and now we move into discussion.
I, I uh had a question and I forwarded to city manager Gertz and. Uh, she had answered it for me, my concern was under the agreement, just to make sure that. The city wasn't responsible for uh attachment, A, scope of work, like all of those duties for. Um, program staff, except in process program, it's a bit. Applications, onboarding of eligible families, like all of that, I just wanted to make sure that. That was done by another entity, because, because the way it reads, it, it just kind of. Spooked me a little bit that we don't have the capacity to do all that.
But this is um, this is identical to what we signed with the. Um, for. For any government program, you have to provide specifics as to what those dollars are being. Resource or spent and um to date, to date, um, as public partners to this program. Um, I would certainly, you know, have council member Dominguez speak on this because she's, she's stayed um. In conversation a little bit more than I've had the opportunity to do. The we care organization has primarily carried um a lot of the dock, the administrative pieces. Um, as the city, we haven't really had to um do administrative work outside of. Putting the agreements together, um, simply because they've been able to administer that within the organization themselves. However, we may with the National Guard, because now we're looking at state level versus. Um, the Army Reserve is national level, when you bring it down to a state level, we, within our vicinity, have. A lot more uh population that's at this level, um, so there may be, but at the same time. Our part would be the administration to making sure that we're doing the public marketing, that we're. We're getting the information out in there, we're directing those individuals to the we care providers. So they can administer that scope of work with those individuals, so.
Sure, what's great is that they actually hired some local folks to do all of that work. So they're in the Quad Cities, I think they had two, maybe two this. And so they were great to hire local folks that can work with um the families and do all of that that was listed. Yeah, because under the intergovernmental support agreement, they list um. Public partner, which we're the public partner, so that's, oh, there's a lot of public partner. It written in here, so that's why I was a little um wanted to clarify how much of that. It administration we're doing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's a pilot program, so that is the thing, I mean, originally when they're putting this together. I think there was some intent for the public partner to be involved in. You know, certain pieces of this, but um that, just as council member Dominguez said. When they were able to hire on administrative staff, that has taken. But they're nearing the same agreement that we did with the reserve, because. Again, based on the funding, maybe things will change with that administrative, also with the state level, maybe it'll go up more as far as needs. And we may find our songs, and then we will have to assess that, and again, within the agreement, it's calling for, you know. An assessment of the. You know, of the process that is said.
And Jeff has just let us know that they um signed up their thousandth kid. To the program between us and Clay County in Missouri, which is really, really awesome to hear, and so it's, I just talked to the. Mayor of Atlanta's office this week, who is also looking into um partnering with them, so that would mean so many. Other families in Georgia that would also um get this, so it's exciting.
All right, is there further discussion?
I just like to. I think has anything on the, maybe because we, we are the economic aspects of this too, um. You have anything else more to add?
The original opportunity, it's extremely exciting, you know, with this expansion to the National Guard. You know, we talked about the amount of people that live together in each, you know, region now. It, it's a factor behind it, so we really assign this and um. There's a little bit more explanation to that question, because I got caught up on that with the Congress. The pot of money that Congress has appropriated these dollars from have to be spent government-to-government. So the federal government can't pay, you know, we can upwards directly. So they're contracting with the city to provide these services, and then in turn, the city contracts with upwards to provide these initiatives.
Okay, so they're the ones that are going to be doing this, doing the tracking outcome and reporting community engagement. Yeah, they're already doing that, okay, yeah, okay. All right.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes. Dominguez, yes. Martinez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Freezer.
Yes. Okay, next step is resolution twenty twenty-four zero two two zero hyphen one three four. This is the money for the travel expenses for uh people from uh the government of West Liberty to uh. Go to the uh Pentagon for the signing of the agreement. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add, um, through, um, and I can have council member who is also. We had a meeting um with the organizing organizers of the um. The event and and it was communicated that this time, they may be able to find additional funding for our travel expenses. And so just uh we care to communicate that there is a possibility for flight costs. Um, so we're, um, we're hoping that we can reduce this even a little bit more, we would let council know that this would at least put a cap on it. Um, so then we're managing within that, our recommendation would be to send um. Most definitely the mayor and council member Dominguez, um. I would like to go as the city manager, however, though I would love that to see and be with the, with you folks too, is who we would like to see. Um, it's a personal thing for me to see the National Guard now come into it. Um, I kind of picked on him a little bit when we were going through the first one and uh. And also kind of hooked some, hooked on a little bit when we were out there and um. They stayed on and I'm really happy to see that, but most importantly, that's what's important is our representatives. Representation at the National Office for this.
And uh I think the resolution is for paying of the travel expenses, you're gonna figure out.
We can, I just wanted to just make sure that they understood what we were kind of talking about, there hasn't been a.
All right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes. Martinez. Freezer.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
McFerrin, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the next, which is resolution twenty twenty-four zero two two zero hyphen one three five. This is a resolution approving a voluntary annexation. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Well, this is just our follow-up procedure um in order for us to report with the county recorder. Um, this is the resolution required by county reporter to be. Um, up for bypasses and we can do the official file.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. Yes.
Freezer.
Yes.
Martinez. Dominguez, yes. McFerrin, yes.
Set the date for the budget work sessions. Do we need to add today?
Yeah, I would send an email.
Is that a motion to table representative? Twenty years, all right, is there discussion about the motion to table? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Before we adjourn, I'd like to mention that uh a couple of uh folks very close to us have had losses um. Uh, our city clerk uh with their grandmother and with council member Martinez uh with the death of his uncle, so. We extend our sympathy uh through these times to uh you too as well, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay, the ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.